At this time, the Chair would like to call the meeting to order the open session meeting to order at 6:54 PM.
Madam Chairman, before we do that, I would like to amend the agenda before we do the agenda, adding on some things for our agenda.
Okay, all right, so let me move to that section and then we can make the amendment.
Okay.
At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the agenda. If there's any amendments to change, let's make them at this time.
Yes, I would like to add on there for, to talk about the graduation, put that down by the discussion. There's another one to be for talking about the 30,000, I mean 30 million for the bond.
And I believe that the bond issue was on the agenda already.
Okay.
Believe we need to amend to have the three-tier bus system added.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that, Miss, I ain't finished, Dr. Skinner.
Okay.
So we got those two, Ms. Pike? And then we gotta put the three tiers on there also.
We are adding to item 6.11, excuse me, item 6.12 will be the three-tier bus schedule. Item 7. Point. Wait a minute. Let's see my agenda. I do apologize. And we are also adding as the discussion item, graduation. And I also think there was one other amendment that needed to be made, and that was to hope, add Hope Hangout Discussion to item 6.1. And move the other ones down. Can someone provide a summary of that so I can type it, or can attorneys type those amendments to the agenda?
The Hope Hangout Discussion should tie in with the first read of the student handbook.
That's two separate entities. Can't put those two together because that's under a different, that's under a different policy. So you can't put those two together.
Okay. So that I'm clear, President Briggs, you're asking for a new 6.1, that would be graduation under new business?
Mm-hmm.
And a new 6.4 for Hope Hangout? So you've got up to 6.7?
Okay, and so, and you have the bus, the three-tier bus, what number is that?
Okay, you want, I'm sorry, I missed the three-tier bus, so you want to add that in as well?
I think that was Skinner's. Yes, Skinner had.
6.2. So now 6.1 is graduation, 6.2 is three-tier bus, 6.3 is requested board action relative to the approval of the March 2020 financial report.
Mm-hmm.
6.4 is requested board action relative to the approval of the 3020 bond amount. 6.5 is requested board action relative to the approval of board education meeting date. And I'm doing this because I'm not typing them. 6.6 is Hope Hangout. 6.7 is the first read of the student handbook, and 6.8 is the first read of MSBA policy 2019 update.
All right. So I hope that we have all of those items. Phil Johnson, can you please send me that in an email? I've tried nine pens and none of them are writing them down.
Sure, let me get it typed up while you, while you move on and it'll come to you in an email.
Thank you. All right, so we have some amendments to the agenda. Have a motion. Seeking a second.
I'll second.
All right. Any further, any further discussion? All right. Director Watery? Director Brooks? Director Carter? Director Abrams?
Hi.
Hi.
Director Graves?
Hi.
Chair Vice President Reagan?
I, just before, before Director Carter is calling and she says she cannot get in from the phone.
Let me, let me finish this, this motion here, Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0 to amend the agenda as printed. As discussed. Okay, moving on to audience comments. Are there any audience comments?
We have not received any, President Briggs.
All right. If we, if there was a pledge of allegiance, if there was a flag, I guess we would stand for that, but seeing no flag, we will move on to the next item. The approval, oh, I gotta call, oh, yeah, we already did that. Did I call that motion? Oh, we did vote. At this time, we're moving on to the approval of the March 25th regular session minutes. Have every board member had the opportunity to review the minutes? All right?
Yes.
If those, okay, if there's no revisions, the Chair is seeking a motion at this time.
Madam Chairman, I ask that we accept the approval of minutes for March 25th, 2020's regular session.
Second.
That says draft.
The draft minutes, yes.
Okay, let me say draft for the meeting. Draft, March 25th, 2020, regular session minutes.
All right.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Director Carter? Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Watery?
Aye.
Director Abrams?
Aye.
Chair of the House, I, motion carries to approve the March 25th draft minutes from regular session. Moving on to the next item. At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to approve all the consent items.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent items.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I can't see them. Let me, let me get on my, I can't see them.
To save time, Madam President?
Yeah. Yes.
To save time, Vice President Reagan, if you'd like, I'll just quickly give you a quick rundown and read if we're trying to.
Yeah, because I don't know what's wrong with our communications today, if you don't mind, sir, I appreciate it.
It's okay, just let me go ahead and read these to you, so 5.1, request, request board action relative to the approval of consent items. 5.2, request action relative to approval of the April 2020 contracts. 5.3, requested board action relative to the approval of the March 2020 bills to be approved. 5.4, requested board action relative to the approval of the Claims Care Incorporated contract. 5.5, requested board action relative to the approval of the Apple device release, refresh release, refresh leaf, number one. 5.6, requested board action relative to the approval of the Ruskin High School Clear Touch Interactive Teaching Panels. 5.7, requested board action relative to the approval of the Ruskin High School Refresh, Refresh Teacher iPads. 5.8, requested board action relative to the approval of the Ruskin High, image, yeah, image table. 5.9, requested board action relative to amendment Plato and Reading Info, sorry, it's cut off. 5.10, requested board action relative to the approval of the Ruskin High, High School Replacement Panel. 5.11, requested board action relative to the forgiveness of the five inclement weather days of staff work schedules for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Thank you, Director Watery.
No problem, sir.
Thank you. All right. I'll pause and let you process that. At this time, we have a motion and a second, and have had a reading and some discussion. The Chair will like to move forward with voting. Director Watery?
Aye.
I have a discussion.
Well, go ahead.
What's your discussion?
Okay, I was trying to state it in the bottom when we were talking about the five days, then we talk about that last board meeting? Days?
Are you?
If I'm not mistaken, to the five days exempting of the five days, wasn't it in the last minutes that we just approved before we got on there, wasn't it in the last ones? Or was it some different type of terminology, if I'm not mistaken? Let me look at them, go ahead.
I believe, I believe Vice President Reagan, what we did was the red snow day at the last official board meeting. These are for the additional five regular snow days that we did not discuss.
Also, now it's 10 altogether.
No, ma, no, sir, it's six.
It's six.
So it's six of them, okay.
Well, you have the red, you have the red snow day, and you have the other five inclement weather days, so that makes sense.
All right, go ready, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
All right. I'm gonna start the voting process over. If there's no further discussion, I'm gonna begin voting. Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Director Watery?
Aye.
Director Graves? Director Abrams?
Aye.
Director Carter? Director Graves? Chair of the House, I, motion carries 5-2-0 to accept the consent items for March 2020, for March 2020.
President Briggs, if I can interject, Director Graves, you're on mute, so we can't hear your responses.
Okay, well, going back to my screen. Moving on to the next portion of the agenda, can we put it on the screen?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so while we're pulling up, I understand, right now, Shelley's pulling up the March 2020 financial report. As regards to new business, the amendment that was made to the agenda, I didn't know if, where exactly it was put.
Right, 6.1 is supposed to be the graduation discussion.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, I have it, I have it, Carla sent it to me, so I'm pulling it up on my email right now.
Directors, I'll forward those to all of you now.
Thank you.
Oh, so, okay, so we're, we're on section 6.1, correct?
Sure.
All right, so 6.1 is graduation. Dr. Skinner?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any updates for the board regarding graduation?
Currently, we have a graduation date that everybody knows the original date was 5/14. The event center is holding a second date of 5/28, just in case we're allowed to convene. There is discussion of trying to have a late date in June or July, and Mr. Allen and his staff are currently looking for a location. And then the other discussion on the table is if all else, we cannot hold one, then we're gonna do something virtually. Justin is working on assisting us with that. So those are our current options at the moment. I don't know if Ms. Rowe has anything else to add to that.
The only thing I would add, Dr. Skinner and directors, would be that Ruskin has a pretty detailed list of events slash announcements that they would like to do during the month of May to really honor seniors via social media, email, and other outlets. So that'll include some slideshows and Twitter posts, et cetera. So they're trying to still find a way to really honor the seniors in the month of May, and then just holding on until we get some more information about the possibility of an actual ceremony date.
All right.
I got a question.
Yes, Vice President Reagan?
Are we looking at the virtual stuff? Less, as far as proactive, are we looking for some type of virtual graduation? Because May is right around the corner, and I know that everybody was supposed to been talking to Justin's to see what type of virtual graduations we could come up with. I have not heard that be stated today for the seniors.
We are considering virtual. Right now, we are still looking to trying to find a location that we could actually hold it, possibly in June or July, but we are definitely considering the virtual and working with Justin's. But right now, we're not 100% sure what that is going to look like, if we're able to, or if we need to go virtual versus a live graduation.
Do we know what the virtual is gonna look like? That's what I'm saying, are you guys ready and prepared to get?
You said so.
So what, I understand what you're saying, and that's my, that's my problem. We understand that we might not be able to do since the schools are closed. I understand what you guys are stating, but I'm proactive. So since therefore, we do not know, let's think of it in terms of, okay, it's not gonna happen, so we should have an update, or at least have some type of focus on where we're going. That's all I'm saying. It hasn't been, it hasn't been stated. All we doing is wells and buts. That's all I'm saying.
I wouldn't say that, Director, I mean, Dr. Skinner, I believe that I did provide the Vice President with an update that you were going to provide a report on Monday, if there's any more detail.
I will, I will, and I will provide the document outlining the senior recognition right now that Ms. Rowe referred to. I'll make sure that you have all those current planned events, but again, the actual graduation is still, working on it. Mr. Allen did meet with some of his seniors to discuss what they would like to do in case of that. So we, we are hoping to have a solution very soon, but we do have several things planned that I will share with you on Monday.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I'll pause for a few more seconds to see if there's any further discussion, because I can't see hands or buzz. All right.
No, I, I, I just have something to say. I think that it's very difficult to predict what you, what you're going to do. You know what I'm saying? I mean, because of just the way the situation is now, and I know that it is a challenge, but I'm sure that the district is looking at some options. But to say what those options are right now would be too premature. So I'm just saying that, Mr. Reagan, for you to know that I assume that the district is doing something, but we just don't know how, we don't know if in, in May the 28th or whenever, we're gonna be able to go out, you know? We don't, we don't know these things. Everything is up, it's a day-to-day thing, but I, and I know people want answers, but it just doesn't always happen, just like we would want it to. But I'm, I'm sure that the district is looking at all options, just not necessarily pinpointing one right now, because you don't know. So that's what I think we need to keep in mind.
And yes, ma, and he did say that he was gonna send it to me, so on Monday.
Whatever it is.
I would like to add one to say, if I could, if I could add one more thing, you know, the, talking with Mr. Allen and his students, they truly want to try their very best to have an in-person graduation at some point. However, when that does not happen, Justin is going to basically have a virtual graduation playbook, because they're gonna tell us step by step on what we need to do. We just, we're just not at that point yet.
All right, thank you so much for sharing that update, and look forward to the updates to come in in near future, Dr. Skinner. Thank you, Director Graves. At this time, we're moving on to item 6.2, the three-tier bus discussion.
Mr. Weekly?
Yes. So in an effort to always look for ways to save money for the district, this, this, come winter, we decided to start looking at possibilities of doing a three-tier bus schedule. So in March, or actually, back in January, I met with Apple to begin that process of how could we save some money through our transportation process? So in doing so, we came up with the three-tier bus schedule that I presented to the Finance Committee in March, with, with the idea that not only would we share the idea and the concept, but then we, on March 11th, we put out a survey to inside stakeholders and outside stakeholders to give us feedback as to how they feel about the three-tier, three-tier bus schedule that we, that we are presenting tonight. We got 406 respondents, and in those respondents, we had a wide variety of negative and positive remarks. And so in my, and if I can, Donna, if I can. If I can share that.
Yeah, Donna will have to stop sharing her screen first.
And so here is the board memo, if you have not seen it. So I'll explain a little bit, then I'll share with you some of the comments, but in this approach, last year, or in this year, we spent about $3.172 million, almost 3.2. In this three-tier schedule that we, we are proposing, will put us down to 2.7447. So that's gonna be a savings each year, starting next year, if we, if you approve this tonight. So every year, we'll, we'll save $428,266. This will have about a .61 effect on our fund balance each year, if this, if this is approved tonight. Now, some history with this, just so to make sure you understand that, we've had multiple tier schedules in the Hickman Mills School District oftentimes. So back when we had more students, we actually, at one point, had a five-tier system, and over time, as enrollment has declined, the tier system has changed up and down. About 2011, 12, the system went back, well, actually, about 13, 14, the system went to a two-tier schedule. And so to accommodate the enrollment and the programs at this, at that time. And this is a good time to approach this, where we've had a reduction in the number of schools, and a three-tier schedule can actually save a decent amount of money. Be sure with you the comments, this is kind of a. So out of those 406 comments, we did kind of a summary of those, and what I'll tell you, some are obviously very for this process, and some of them are not. And so please understand that one of the things that we are certainly trying to share, some of the notes that we have down at the bottom from ELT were, you know, this would be a very common schedule in relationship to other districts across the city. Most districts have their high schools start earlier, and elementarys have a later timeframe. In addition to that, we have oftentimes, and a lot of our secondary students are very active in sports and other activities, speech and debate, and oftentimes, they have to leave school early due to our late getting out, so, and they miss a lot of class time, including our teachers that are sponsors, and coaches for those events oftentimes miss class time. So, which is often the reason why most districts start earlier. So this would be more in line with the suburban conference schools that we currently have, and all other metro area schools. In addition to that, we do have some educational impact to this way. Also, a lot of our students that want to go to Herndon and some other off-campus programs oftentimes cannot participate because of our late start, especially the morning programs. Herndon is a perfect example, and Ms. Rowe can probably talk more clearly about that, but our students cannot be participants in the AM schedule or AM courses at the Herndon Career Center. So by changing our schedule, some of our students would have that access and ability to apply for those AM courses.
Oh, can we, is it questions? Is it question time?
It is for me.
Yes, yes.
Well, you know, I'm really glad to hear this, because I've been talking about this. This sounds like the same stuff that I've been saying in all our board meetings. And it's kind of funny, because I heard somebody say something about the Herndon Center, and, and, and some of our athletes weren't able to participate. So I am really, really, really thrilled to see that we're finally doing this, finally. But looking at the times, I'm not, I'm still not in agreement with, and I, and Smith-Hale should be up here with Ruskin. I'm not agreeable with the two middle schools being able to go still early, especially when our children need to be, especially with those kids. And I've said this in multiples, and I'm glad that it's brought to light now.
Well, I want to tell you, we couldn't, we tried to move the middle school, that was one of our goals, was to get both secondary schools moved to that first tier. The problem with that is, we only ended up saving about, about $125,000 because of the bus needs. Obviously, the secondary schools have the largest need of buses, and so by splitting them, it was, we're able to say, actually save more money by, by doing it this way. But that was our goal, was try to get both of them on that first tier. It just didn't have enough savings for us.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're moving in this direction. I know we've, we've been discussing this for multiple years now, and to have some progress in this area is a very good thing. Is there anything else from any other board member?
Yes, Director Abrams here. I, I too agree with the moving the secondary schools to an earlier start, however, with the nine o'clock, I think that nine o'clock to four o'clock is just too late for any of the schools.
Yeah.
If we could possibly just take those four and phase them into some of the other time slots, I don't know, I just think that nine o'clock, the nine to four is gonna cause too many issues with teacher absences, with appointments. I looked at the comments, someone mentioned Link, I think that's gonna be a great issue, how we service those students who parents used to drop them off earlier in the morning, if they have to get to work and can't wait until nine o'clock to get their kids, their elementary kids. We could get those nine o'clock slot times moved up to some of the early ones, even if the 8:30, that's just, the nine o'clock is a little too late, in my opinion.
We'll certainly, we'll certainly work with Apple to see if we can do that. That may change the savings, but we'll certainly look, work with them, see if we can even get them a little bit earlier. The only issue would be that it could possibly increase the number of buses, and that's, that's really the issue is, is that it's not the number of routes, a lot of times, it's really the number of buses that it takes, and we're going from 63 to a, to a 49. And so by, if you, that's around, you may end up increasing the total number of buses, which will increase that dollar amount. But we can certainly look at that and see if we can move some of them.
President Briggs?
And so, if, hold on one second, so if there's some, it seems like. I'm hearing that we need to do a little bit more discussion, are we seeking action on this tonight? Or are you wanting action, or are we still discussing this? Dr. Weekly?
Well, I would certainly like action, but it sounds like we have some board members that want me to move. I, I think there's, there's 31 buses for that last scheduled here, so, you know, I, we're not gonna be able to move all of them. So you're, you're still gonna have some buses, and I, I just don't think you're gonna end up moving that many. You'll move maybe half of those, if, at best. And by doing that, you're still gonna have a third tier, and it's still gonna be, gotta allow those, the whole issue is, is that you can use the same bus for three different time slots, and you gotta allow those buses to run that route and get back to the building in a period of time. So you have enough time for them to do that, or you're having late buses every day. And so we don't want to put our families in that situation either, where their kids are getting home late every day. And so, we don't want to put our families in that situation either, where their kids are getting home late every day, according to what we tell them we're going to get them home. So...
Well, we, President Briggs, I would like to see us, uh, take it to the educational accountability. First of all, I mean, just like, uh, and I am in agreement with, uh, Director Abrams, nine to four, they're going to get home late anyway, nine to four, especially in the, uh, especially when the daylight saving time starts. So, I would like to see us come up with some type, because, like I said, that would be something we could look at and, uh, take a little bit more, maybe invite Apple Bus to come to that, if that's all right with Director Abrams.
I, I have a comment. Yes, Director Graves.
Uh, I was going to say that, you know, that we, we had a big issue about the high schools starting so late. You can't have it, we can't have it both ways. You know, if, you know, we say that the high school, they're missing out on certain programs, so it's always been an issue about their time. So, now we talk, so, because the buses have to take those kids home, have to run those routes, and then come back and pick up our other kids. Of course, we used to say, well, they get to school so early, you know, seven thirty or seven forty, so now it's nine o'clock, so we just can't have it. What, we can't have, we can't have it both ways. If we do, the high school let them come early, the elementary is going to have to come later. And it might be eight thirty, but you, you don't know, because you don't know how the, how the, uh, you know, the bus will run. And so, it's all about trying to save money. And so, we need to look at that. That's just something that we need to look at.
I think, thank you, uh, Director Graves, uh, and everybody who has participated in this section of discussion. I think I'm in favor of moving this item, Dr. Weekly, to the Education Committee, just for, just a little bit more discussion. Did it, I'm not sure it was on the agenda yesterday.
I, I would say, uh, President Briggs, this was taken to the Finance Committee, because it deals with, you know, saving money. Um, so therefore, it was not taken to the EAC, but it was taken to the Finance Committee.
But let's keep all in perspective. I understand, and I do agree with you, uh, Director Graves, but you got to keep in mind, remember when I was talking about this situation before, nobody, all these comments that we're seeing on here, the summary of results, none of that was, uh, nobody was agreeing with that. So, now that, uh, Director Abrams has brought up a good point about eight to four, and teachers trying to go to appointments and getting their kids to appointments, I'm in agreement with trying to look at a better thing. I understand we're trying to save money on everything, but also, I want to look at the safety of our kids. Also, want to look at the, uh, uh, giving the benefit of the doubt to our teachers also, just in case they would like to go and get, and have an appointment Monday through Friday. Because nobody, we, we're supposed to look out for all of them, not just one. We got to look out for everybody.
All right. I think I want to remind everyone of their two-minute comment.
Yeah.
Comments. So, we're going to go ahead. If it's a board's pleasure, can we please move this to the Education Accountability Meeting, just to kind of flush it out? I, you know, there, there are some concerns, if that's okay with Chair Abrams.
Yes, that's what I'll meet.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. For, um, Agenda Item six point three is the, uh, Finance, March Finance with Ms., uh, Wilsey.
Uh, Dr. Skinner, Madam President, point of order real quick. Sorry. Um, I want to, I want to check with the lawyer. I want, we'd like to check with the district attorney to inquire if, if action needs to take place in order for that, uh, for this discussion to be moved to the Education Accountability Committee.
Yeah, we, um, I unmuted at the same time that you did, Mr. Watry. President Briggs, if you could, um, entertain a motion to move that item to the Educational Accountability Committee.
I was, I was, I was just waiting on someone to chime in. All right. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to move, um, Item six, um, uh, Item six point two, three-tier, uh, bus to the Education Accountability Meeting.
President Briggs, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we move Item six point three, three-tier buses to the Education Committee, that is the Chairman of, Director Abrams.
Thank you.
You're right. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks. Director Carter. Did I miss somebody? Myself.
Brooks, unmute.
Okay, he's on mute.
Yep.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
Did you hear my vote?
Yes, sir. There it is.
Six to zero. There you go. I see your face now.
I am eighteen, old enough to vote. Ha, ha, ha.
Yeah, I, I see you.
It keeps, it keeps flipping off, but thank you.
All right. At this time, the, we're moving on to Item six point three.
And I believe, Mr. Weekly, we'll have to stop sharing so that we can get back to our agenda.
Okay.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the financial report for the end of, for March thirty, as of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Uh, the total revenues, um, are budgeted still at nine million and five. We received in five point nine million in March. So far this year, we've received in sixty-six million nine, uh, with twenty-three million six still to be received. Uh, percent of funds received for the year is seventy-three point nine, compared to seventy-four point nine percent at this time last year. Total expenses, the working budget, it's eighty-five million. March expenses, we paid out six point nine. Year-to-date, we've paid out fifty-nine million, with the remaining budget to be spent of twenty-six million. Percent of expenses paid are sitting at sixty-nine point four percent. At this time last year, we were at sixty-seven point three. Uh, budget revisions that were made in the month of March, we added twenty thousand dollars to the super, for the superintendent search firm to the board budget. And then we added fifteen thousand to both revenue and expenditures for the fifteen in Mahomey's grant. Um, and this, you'll see the twenty thousand that was for the superintendent search, and it was a decrease to the overall budget fund, fund balance of point zero four six. Uh, this, um, is just the, um, invoice, um, history for the TIF Education Fund. It has not changed since the last meeting. You can just scroll through all of this, and yeah, there's a couple pages. There we go. So, the projected fund balance at the end of March thirty-first is the fourteen point five eight one, fifteen point eight six at the, of the twenty-twenty-one school year, and nineteen point nine at, you know, the twenty-one-twenty-two, and twenty point eight at the end of twenty-two-twenty-three. Um, so, Mr. Brooks had asked at the last meeting regarding the savings that we would make from the substitutes. We, um, I right now have three hundred and fifty-nine thousand left in subs. We are paying about twenty-two thousand a week for twenty-two long-term. And, um, so that's going to take us down to about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings, uh, for substitutes for the year after it's all said and done. Do I have any other, do I have any questions regarding the financial statements?
Yeah. Uh, President Bro, uh, Briggs?
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
You said something about the Mahomey. What did you say?
We received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the fifteen in the Mahomeys. Uh,
Okay. Did we, as a district, send something in appreciation back to them?
Yes, Dr. Skinner.
Yes, sir. I drafted a letter and sent a letter to them, thanking them.
Thank you.
As well as we put something appreciative on Twitter for them.
Thank you.
I, I, I do want to take a second to, can you go back to the last PowerPoint?
Oh, all right. Let me pull it up. There we go. The last screen you said?
Yeah, the, uh, fund balance screen.
Yes.
All right. So, I'm I'm hoping that, I mean, I'm not hoping because of the pandemic that we're in, but I, I, I would have to assume that there may be a slight increase in our fund balance at the end of twenty-twenty, based on not utilizing the Apple buses as much.
Well, there's a better chance that we'll come in at that fourteen point five eight, um, just if we're not spending the money, yes, because the budget is built. Um, so that fourteen point five eight represents the budget itself. So...
So, so you're, so what you're saying to me is that if this pandemic didn't happen, that fund balance would be lower, because we will be spending more money in, in transportation?
No, I, there's a possibility we could come in higher than the fourteen point five, but that's, if we spent every time that was created in the budget, and if we received in everything that we had said we would receive in, we would end at a fourteen point five eight. So, since we're not going to do that, there is a possibility that we'll come in higher. But I just, I haven't done a projection on what that can look like yet.
Yeah, I think it's important, Shelley and Dr. Skinner, I know that, I've been following this for the past three and a half years. It, it, it's in the, in the district's best interest. I, I, we have to continue to explore cost-saving measures until we reach that recommended fund balance of twenty-one percent. Now, I don't know how we're moving money all the time, but it, for some reason, I believe that that fund balance should look better by the end of this year. I mean, if I can list about five examples right now, but I'm not going to do that, because that's more administrative. But as a board president, I pay attention to every line item, and I think that that's something that we probably need to take a closer look at.
I, I would agree, um, and, and you know, I, we have talked, um, outside here, and I understand about some of the administrative things, and I do believe, based on some of those lack of expenditures that we've already budgeted for, we should be able to come in above that fourteen point five. But I understand, you know, everything's been budgeted, so unless something else comes up that would require us to spend additional funding, um, that would be unforeseen, because again, just as this is an unforeseen savings for different issues, there still could be unforeseen expenses in the next month or so.
All right.
Uh, President Briggs?
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
You know, and I, and I, and I know that sometimes, Mrs. Shelley, because it has been shown when we have been to a forum, that there's, uh, uh, some other money that's never posted. So, are you now posting everything in these budgets? You know, because, uh, Mr. Sharp had pointed it out before about, uh, there was some cost that was not put into our budgets. So, uh, I'm, I'm trying to recall the name of what he stated, but I'm quite sure you're familiar with what he was saying. So, is everything? Yeah.
It's the capital transfer line that is now sitting there on the fund balance. It's all included in the budget. It just is not presented in the financial reports, and it's been there probably for a year now, since Mr. Sharp made that comment.
Okay, and, okay, and I know, and, and I know that by, as President Briggs stated too, because I follow this also with our, uh, budget, uh, since we're not using anybody right now, and, uh, I'm quite sure, and I don't know if she meant by the end of this year, but maybe also by the end of this, since school is canceled, it should go up a little higher also, correct?
Uh, in one aspect, I'm sorry. I mean...
The percentage, the percentage of the budget for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty year. Shouldn't we see some type of fluctuation increase, since we're not really using anything right now?
There's only...
Bus-wise, buses, we're not using buses. We're not...
Right, e- exactly. There's going to be savings in transportation. There's going to be savings in substitutes. Um, there's just certain areas, and so there's a possibility, yes. I don't know what those savings are going to be yet, and we also have to receive in all the revenue that's been budgeted as well.
Okay.
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, Director Watry.
I would like for everyone listening, including board members, I want, uh, I want to make sure that this is clear, that I understand the fund balance is, is where it is right now, based on the fact that we're dealing with an unprecedented situation that's happened. But based on, even based on the savings that we could get from this unprecedented situation, those savings could also boomerang back in the aspect of getting the school, school started. We don't know. We don't know this much. We have these, ending fund balances are based on, um, estimates and not, uh, certainties. And what, the reason why I'm saying this is I, I really don't want board members to get their hopes up, that, of, of, of estimating or projecting something that may not, may or may not happen, when the actuality of the situation is unknown. So, even as moving forward with this year's fund balances, as next year's fund balance, these are estimates. And I want to make sure that we understand that with these estimates, they're based on unforeseeable situations, variables that aren't equated into this fund balance. For instance, the coronavirus was not equated into this fund balance. So, as moving forward, I want to ensure that even this, that board members take on the expectation that this fund balance will fluctuate, but not to sit, to, but not to overreact with the aspect of what their expectations are.
President Briggs?
I know, I'm, I'm Vice President. Let me go ahead and get this one real quick, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, you go ahead. All right, all right.
All right. So, I understand your comment, uh, Director Watry, and, you know, it's really not a, this is, I'm not debating, I'm just speaking from a historical position in a number of different areas, not just a coronavirus issue. Um, and so, with that being said, the district of, a few years ago, uh, had a physical goal to, uh, get to fifteen percent. And later on in this discussion, because resources, financial stability means more educational resources for our students, more opportunities to pay our staff members what they deserve and have earned. And so, the reason why it's important for us to set some hard expectation is to ensure that we can carry out some of those goals that we've had years ago, and that's to pay our staff what they deserve, and two, to provide high-quality educational resources for the students in our district. So, it's not, you know, something that I personally and professionally would take lightly. It's just a comment that I pay very close attention to this.
And if I so may, President Briggs?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Director Watry, I understand too, as a, because this is something that is recommended by the state to pay attention to. Because if you don't have no money, you can't get anything for your students. And we understand that things come up, just like we had to do the playground over at Irvin. We understand the unforeseen, but we also have to think long-term. Because as the president government of the body of this Hickman Mills School District, it is our job to make sure that the funding does not go below a certain mark. And when it does, because anybody can spend money, but what are you spending it on? Is the main key. So, let's also keep that also in, in our eyes in future too.
I know it's all two minutes, yeah, two-minute comments, and I don't, I know I'm not going to say another thing about this, so is there any...
I want to make a quick, a, a quick statement just regarding, um, the revenues as well. Because last month, I brought up the fact that there were two point three million dollars in protested tax revenues. So, whether we receive that or not too, will also have a reflection on this fund balance. So, there are different things that go into play into reaching this fourteen point five eight one. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Right. Thank you. All right. If there's, uh, no further discussion, the chair is seeking a motion to adopt the, uh, financial report.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we adopt, uh, Item six point three now. Is that correct?
It is.
Six point four?
It's six point three.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Six point three, requesting board action relative to the approval of the March twenty-twenty financial report.
Second. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter. Director Graves.
Aye.
Hi.
Director Abram?
Hi.
Chair of the House, I motion carry six to zero to accept the financial report. At this time, we're moving on to item six point four. Discussion about the, uh, thirty million dollar bond amount for 2020.
And this will be co-presented with Mr. Weekly, Ms. Willsey, and guest of Mr. Lorenzo Boyd.
Yes, I have a question here is from Mr. Boyd with Stifel Nichols. I was just going to have him run through how we came up with the numbers and what his recommendation would be.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Hey.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
Welcome.
Okay, thank you for having me. Um, so I think I, um, put together this presentation, uh, based on a conversation with, um, Dr. Weekly and, um, this Willsey, I think there's three parts to the presentation that we'll kind of go over. I won't take too much of your time, I think some of this presentation I've, uh, um, talked about before, um, in terms of the process, but we'll go to the step one in terms of the bond process. So right now, the, the Hickman Mill School Districts, there ends, there are basically six steps to actually the bond process. Um, step one is the initial process. Um, you guys, the Hickman Mill School District, they're in the initial process where you're kind of getting together, uh, where you identify your project, what's going to be done. And then actually you take it to the voters and receive voter authorization. And then once you receive voter authorization, then you have the, the next five steps that I have listed there in terms of engaging the participants, structuring the bond issue, uh, marketing the issue, that means selling the actual bonds, and then actually pricing the issue and setting the interest rates, and then closing. And then step six, which is the final, um, after closing, there are still an abundance of things that need to be done after a bond issue passes and is sold and closed in terms of continuing to, um, um, send across your required information to, uh, the repositories in terms of your annual financial statements and operating data. Next page. Uh, when we, when we look at structuring a bond issue for any client, we look at a couple of different things. Um, we look at the financial condition of the issuer, we look at the sources of income, income or repayment, meaning you, this is a general obligation transaction, so you'll be paying that from property tax revenues in your fund. Three, um, your cash flows and your reserves, meaning, uh, the tax levy that you have in place in terms of your debt service fund, um, your current and future borrowing needs. Uh, we like to kind of be conservative because we know most school districts and school districts like yourself, every three to five years they're possibly looking at the idea of possibly, uh, issuing new money bonds in the future, future, and possibly no tax increase. So we want to make sure that we don't, um, uh, restrict you too much in terms of the next three to five years. Then also we look at your bonding capacity, because as you know, in the state of Missouri, um, you, whenever you issue geo-bonds, you can only issue fifteen percent of your assessed valuation. And then one of the things that we look at as well in terms of, and what we've done on previous bond issues, are sale to, um, sell within the Kansas City metro area. The next page, the financing team, I won't spend too much time on, on this page, but there are several parties, uh, to the transaction. There's the underwriter, that's Stifel Nicholas. Um, we actually purchased the bonds from the issuer and structured the bond issue. And we look at the financing plan and look at, you know, future debt needs of the school district. Then there's bond counsel, uh, they're the firm that actually, um, prepares all the legal documents for the transaction. And then you have your underwriter and disclosure counsel, um, they're the firm, the, uh, the law firm that kind of puts together the marketing document, the preliminary official statement. Um, if you're doing a, 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 a new money project, sometimes you have to look at an architect. And then there's the paying agent trustee, that's the firm that actually pays the bondholders, um, their interest payments and their principal payments, uh, with the next page. So, um, there are basically three main rating agencies out there in terms of rating bonds, S and P, Fitch and Moody's. Right now, um, as for school districts in the state of Missouri, uh, S and, S, S and P, um, rates probably, um, seventy-five percent of the school districts within the state of Missouri. And you'll see their, their range there on the screen from triple A all the way down to, uh, triple B minus, which is investment grade. The Hickman Mill School District is currently rated A, uh, by Standard and Poor's. And then you have the other two rating agencies, Fitch and Moody's. I'll go to the next page. So the underlying rating, as I mentioned, the Hickman Mill School District has an underlying rating of A on all their general obligation bonds. But I do want to add this, um, that's your underlying rating, so that's equivalent to an individual's credit score. So the higher your underlying rating, um, the lower your borrowing cost would be on your interest rate. Um, but we've also, um, for the last several transactions, um, entered your bonds in the Missouri Direct Deposit Program. And so the Direct Deposit Program is rated a double A plus by, um, Standard and Poor's. And that's because you kind of piggyback on the state's underlying rating of triple A. So all your, um, your, um, your operating, uh, monies are diverted to a trustee. And then because they're diverted to a trustee to pay your bonds, you receive a double A plus rating funds being diverted to that trustee. And then the district will then reimburse itself. Um, either, it's up to the district, they can reimburse themselves monthly from their debt service fund, twice a year or one time a year, it just depends on the ca- cash flow of the school district. So when the rating agencies look at your underlying rating, um, they look at the credit analysis, they do a credit analysis of the issuer. They look at the financial, economic, and overall management of the issuer, so they look at various things in terms of your fund balances, both on the operating side and both the debt service side. Um, and they look at how you spend your funds. Um, they look at, have you had any defaults? That's pretty rare when you're looking at the general obligation bond. Um, and so with that, the general obligation bonds, because they backed by unlimited faith and credit of the issuer, they have the lowest interest rate, so you'll have the lowest fees associated with that transaction as well. Because I like graphs, I decided to put graphs in this presentation just to kind of let you know in terms of how the flow of funds work, uh, for any bond issue. So the issuer, as you can see to your left in the brown, the issuer issues the bonds to the underwriter. The underwriter sells the bonds to the bondholders. Then what you have is the trustee then pays the interest payments, as you can see, the interest payments back to the bondholders, um, twice yearly. There's one, one time in terms of, uh, your principal payments, and then you pay your interest payments twice a year. Next page. So right now, the state of Missouri, there are basically, um, two different types of issues. So there's an odd number cycle in terms of general obligation bond elections, and then there's an even number. Right now, we are in an even number year 2020. So if you were to vote in February of 2020, you had to receive a two-thirds majority approval. In April, August, and November, those are four sevens, so that is a fifty-seven point one percent approval. If you were to do this next year, um, then obviously you would only have one bite of the apple in terms of that four seven, which is fifty-seven percent. Um, February, August, and November, in odd numbered years are sixty-six percent. Those are pretty hard to garner. So with this, with the school district looking at an August vote, you would have to have your ballot language to your county, um, by May twenty-sixth. And I put that down in the lower stands of where you can see. Um, with the August ballot, you have to have your language certified and to the county, um, by May twenty-sixth. So the board would meet presumably before that, finalize the election language, and then submit that to the county with the help of either bond counsel and your local council and the school district and ourselves. Next page. As I mentioned previously, in terms of your debt capacity, uh, in the state of Missouri, you can issue in terms of general obligation bonds, you can issue fifteen percent, uh, up to fifteen percent of your assessed valuation. So right now, your assessed valuation being a little over five hundred and one million. Your debt limit is at seventy-five point one million. You currently have, uh, thirty-six million dollars, a little over thirty-six million dollars on the books. Uh, so that leaves you with capacity of thirty-nine point one million. Uh, now that thirty-nine point one million doesn't mean you can issue all of that at no tax increase. That just means that you can issue up to thirty-nine million up to your fifteen percent capacity. Next page. So the next two pages, uh, summarizes all the bonds, um, and certificates of participation on the books for the Hickman Mill School District. So as you can see, uh, the 2011, uh, issue, you still have nine point six million remaining there with the principal payment um, that was made actually last month of two point two million. Um, and then you have, uh, uh, then you have your, uh, Series 2014 leasehold revenue bonds. Um, those were issued in the original principal amount of seven, uh, point four million. You have a little over six million left, those pay on April first of each year in terms of their principal payments. And then you have your Series 2015 certificates of participation, um, that was issued in the original principal amount of nine point eight million. And that's due on, that makes payments on April fifteenth of every year. So you made a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar principal payment yesterday, as a matter of fact, on that issue. Next page, you have your Series 2016 certificates of participation, um, that was issued in the original principal amount of three point seven million. Currently, you have about two point six million that pays on April fifteenth of each year as well. And then you have your Series 2016 general obligation funding bonds. Uh, those bonds were issued to advance refund the Series 2008 bonds or to refinance for savings, the 2008 bonds. And then you have your new money, um, Series 2016 A bonds, um, which were voted in April of 2016, they were issued in the original principal amount of nineteen million dollars, and they currently have, uh, fifteen million, a little over fifteen point three million remaining. Next page. Um, when Stifel started working with the district, um, as you can see on this chart, we started working with the school district back in 2014. So since that time, we've done six transactions with the school district for a total new money, in terms of new money to the school district of forty-one point three million. And we've done two refinancings for the school district, which netted about two point five million in interest savings. So right now, we're being, um, the next page, this is where we have your, and I won't spend a lot of time, but I'll open it up to any questions after this. But this is a tax levy analysis that we put together for the school district, and this kind of determines, um, how much the school district can issue in general obligation bonds. So what you'll see there, we have the tax year and the debt year. So going from left to right, you'll see the tax year, uh, the school district, they, they set their tax rate in one year for debt service the next county year. So then you have the next column, your five hundred.
Mr. Boyd, we've lost you.
Okay, here.
I thought it was me.
I thought it was me too.
Yeah, he's not.
Broke the computer.
Did he get kicked off?
No, he's still there, his face is still there. His image.
He probably frozen. Can we take a little recess?
Uh, no. We'll just wait a few minutes.
Yeah, now they'll see his icon anymore as if he lost his signal, so maybe he would log back also.
Can somebody just call him and then we could talk to him like that?
Yeah, no, so what I, so Vice President, Vice President Reagan, let's just take a pause for a quick second and give him a chance to, uh, log back in. I'll text him. Mr. Weekly, can you please give him a call?
I can send him a text.
Shelley too, I did not, I, yeah, I don't have his information.
Oh, okay. I think this is the last slide anyway.
I've sent him a text, I'm still waiting for a response.
Ms. Briggs?
Yes?
Are, are we going to do anything about promoting the, uh, bond as a board?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask too.
I think that they, Marissa is.
Okay, I was just making time, wondering about that since we're waiting on Mr. Boyd.
Yeah, and I also think Dr. Skinner will have a report. If, I mean, you can briefly, while we're waiting, I hate to have a whole nother conversation, but they are planning, uh, to do some signage and some other stuff, so.
Okay.
Can everyone hear?
There he is.
Yeah, there he is.
There he is, right there, okay. Don't try to leave us. All right, so we're, we're right here, so, um, we're just waiting on you to kind of sum it up so that we can, we're seeking action on this tonight, correct? Hello, Mr. Boyd?
Uh-oh, again.
Oh.
We are, we are seeking action on this, I, I can kind of give you a scenario that I.
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, so the next column that says tax revenue is basically what we are expecting, that five point five million based on the five hundred and one million assessed value at a one point one for the debt service levy. And the next column is, uh, utilities, so that's about two hundred and twenty-one thousand that we receive in and put to the debt service funders, which gives us a total revenue of five point seven million expected. Um, the next column, the net debt service is what it takes to pay for the principal and interest that we have outstanding, that four point six, which then gives us fund balance remaining of one point five million, one point five seven one. And if you add that to the fund balance that was remaining of a one point seven six, we'll have a fund balance in debt service to three point three. So that gives us about a ninety-two percent. You don't want to be over a hundred percent in that percent of debt service. If you're there, you have to spin down to that a hundred percent mark. So that's why we've done those defeasance over the past couple of years. So going into 2021, if we did not do a bond, you'll see that we would be at a hundred and forty-nine percent. And we would have to pay off some of that principal and interest, we can't hold that much money in our debt fund. So that's what allows us to be able to go out for this bond without a tax increase. Simple, quick scenario, but.
So that's good to know.
Please, that leads me to my next question, Shelley, thank you so much. And, and so that, that's why this fund balance is important.
All right, the debt service doesn't have anything to do with our fund balance though.
But historically, historically, for the, how many consecutive years a district has had to do a tax anticipation loan?
Right, but we can't use this debt service fund for anything but debt service. So we have nothing to do with that piece, so.
I understand that, but what you did, did say is that we will have to go out and get a loan.
Hello? Lorenzo Boyd is back.
Is he?
That he's joined.
Hello, Mr. Boyd?
I'm back.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm not sure what's going on there.
So I kind of went through a quick scenario of the total revenue and the existing net. So I kind of ran through that and then over to the percent column, I don't know if maybe you want to give them and, and a better example than I did.
Okay, yeah, I'll, um, I'll go back to that previous sheet, sorry about that. So, uh, the state assessed railroad and utility, but, uh, you see that, that's just basically a five-year average. That's what the school district is putting into the debt service fund every year. And as you can see, um, And as you can see, um, last year, the school district put two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars into that fund. So the five-year average that we're using there is two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, which brings you to your total revenue. Uh, then you have your aggregate net debt service, and that's the debt service that on all your outstanding bonds in terms of geo-bonds, um, that you currently have that you're paying out of fund three. So you see you're levying a dollar ten right now. You see your required levy is for next year is sixty-seven cents. So you're bringing in the most important column. What you can use to, to kind of factor in for a new bond issue is that use of fund balance column. So every year you're adding that use of fund balance column, you're adding that amount of revenue in terms of your fund three to your fund balance. So you'll see this year you're adding one point five million. Next year is two point one million. So if you did not do a new bond issue, um, you see where the last column shows you at a hundred and forty-nine percent, forty-nine point seven percent. You cannot legally exceed one hundred percent in terms of your debt service fund, end of your debt service fund balance. So you need to do one of two things, well, one of three things. You either need to, before you get to one hundred percent, either start paying down bonds using some of your fund balance to pay off some of your bonds early. You can do a new money bond transaction or you can lower your, your debt service levy. So that, that column, the use of fund balance column, that's what I'm using, that excess revenue to size your new transaction. So go to the next page. So the next page comfortably, you know, um, what we kind of.
Mr. Boyd, I just have one question. You said fund balance, so we would have to pay out of which, which fund balance?
Debt service fund balance, fund three.
Okay.
Yeah, not your operating.
Okay, and which one is fund, uh, which balance is that on our, on our spreadsheet?
That is the la, the second to last column on your right, the fund balance right there. You see where, I'm on page sixteen, you see the top, it says one point seven million, and then for the debt year two thousand twenty, it has three point three million.
Mm-hmm, I see it now, so we're good, okay.
Yep, so that is your fund balance. So you're at ninety-two percent presumably at the end of this calendar year. Um, and then next year, if you did not do a bond issue this year, uh, put something on the ballot, you would add two point one million. And that would increase your fund balance to a little over five point four million. And as you can see here, I think that's being conservative because that's showing no assessed valuation growth. Uh, so presumably you'll have some assessed valuation growth, but we're assuming zero percent here. So you would have to use some of that fund balance and fund three to pay down some of your geo-bonds. It could not be used for any other purpose. It can only be used to pay down geo-bonds.
So, Mr. Boyd, President Briggs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm looking at this, uh, and I'm still on page sixteen where it says ninety-two, and I see the three point three million. And then, uh, for the twenty, twenty though, but it, it says a hundred and forty-nine point seven. So right now we're getting ready to take off some of that to get down to the hundred percent or below at least about ninety-five percent, correct?
So, yeah, so right, so what happens is that ninety-two percent, Mr. Reagan, is basically that, that three point three million that represents, that, that represents ninety-two percent of that next following year's debt service, so that three point six million right there. You see on the next line down in terms of where it says aggregate net debt service?
Yes, sir.
Three point three million is ninety-two percent of that three point six million, your next year's debt payment. So if you did nothing, if you didn't, if you didn't do a bond issue this year and we didn't put new debt on the books, then you would add two point one million to your fund balance, and then your fund balance would grow to five point four million. And that would be a hundred and forty-nine percent of your next year's payment of three million, six forty-eight, eight thirty-eight. And legally you cannot be above in the state of Missouri more than one hundred percent. So that's where we know by looking at the spreadsheet that we need to do something uh, this year or as, or as, or at the latest April of next year, uh, at the latest, um, before you get it's over that one hundred percent and you have to lower your levy or either pay down some of your debt.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So the next page, what we're looking at.
Ms. Briggs.
Oh, Ms. Briggs, did you have a question?
Oh, no, no, I don't have.
Mr. Boyd, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am.
I'm having some difficulty hearing mechanically. And, uh, what does, uh, this, uh, epidemic in the market have to do with our bonds or the to, uh, to the market or, or still not sure where we're gonna be on all this. So what, what are your, your project?
So I, I think, I think I heard you. You were kind of breaking up, uh, Mr. Brooks, but I think I, I know the gist of your question. So, um, and, and your question was, was justified in terms of the last month or the last, yeah, I would say the last month since the first part of March. Uh, it's kind of been unprecedented at times in terms of the municipal market and the equity market. I will add the equity market into that equation as well. So the, the last three weeks of March, there weren't really any transactions being done in the marketplace at all. Bonds could not be priced at all because rates were basically going up and down by thirty basis points almost every day. Um, and then in a two-day period, we saw, actually in a two-day period, we saw, um, you saw the, the interest rates move one hundred and thirty-five basis points in, in two days. That's the most and the largest movement in interest rates ever in the bond market. And we actually tied the, for the largest one-day record. So we had a hundred and thirty-five basis points where interest rates, um, rose by one hundred and thirty-five basis points or one point three five percent in two days. So, um, that was pretty rough, the last three, the last three weeks of March. But right now, the municipal market has stabilized quite a bit. I've priced five school district transactions in the last week. Um, and we're seeing that the last two weeks, the market has been very stable. And it's now getting back to almost business as usual in terms of bonds that are being priced within the marketplace. So, um, just to kind of give you some thoughts, the, on the last two weeks, I've priced five transactions for school districts in the state of Missouri, uh, for a little over forty-four point eight million dollars. And they were all, uh, more than two times oversubscribed. So that means that if I sold ten million dollars of bonds, I received twenty million in orders. So we were able to lower interest rates. So there's an appetite for bonds still out there. The market is being stable, and now we're seeing the municipal market um, kind of, um, bounce back where you're seeing issues done, um, weekly and getting back to the, uh, business as usual. And.
Uh, Mr., I, I, I get that. So before you get deep in it, what's the average base point for bonds typically?
In terms of, in, in, that depends on your rating. So you're.
We have an A-plus rating is what you shared.
A rating. So, um, so I'll kind of go back to this. So think about it this way, where you're talking about underlying ratings. If you have an individual credit score of seven hundred, let's say you may get a, you may get a loan at three percent. If you have a, if you have a individual credit score at, at six hundred, you may get an interest rate of three and a half percent. So you're looking at an A-rated bond issue, but actually, remember, I don't know if you remember, Ms. Briggs, when I was saying that even though you have your underlying rating of A, we enter your bonds in the Missouri direct deposit program, which gets you a double A plus. So your bonds are rated double A plus, which is one notch below triple A. So we're looking at right around for a twenty-year transaction at double A plus. In today's market, um, you're looking at right around three and a quarter percent overall, which is wonderful.
That's, uh, President Briggs. Uh, Mr. Bo, uh, Mr. Boyd, I would like to ask you, I noticed that you stated that we have, uh, May the twenty-sixth. Now with this, uh, pandemic going on, those, that May twenty-sixth, uh, is going to be final? Or it could change at any given time?
So that's right now, so, so right now, um, you have to have your ballot language to your county by May twenty-sixth. Now that could change because as you know, they, they changed the April date. Remember they changed the April date in terms of the bond election, so now that's pushed back to June. So who knows what's gonna happen with the state? If they move that back, but there's been no indication. We're on a call with MSB today, and there's been no indication that they're gonna move that back. Um, so you would have to have your ballot language to your respective county by May twenty-sixth, and then you would vote in August. And if, and even if you vote and it's successful in August and we have an unstable market, you don't have to issue your bonds at that point. You can actually hold on to your bonds, not issue them, and wait to enter the market to when the market is stable.
Okay, that's, that sounds good because based on what you've shared with us is that we have a, a A rating, and you entered it at, at, at a, a triple plus rating at a three percent. So that, I mean, that's, that's pretty good. I think that, that's, that's a good, a, a, a good place to be.
Yeah, I mean, borrowing, you know, presumably if you issue all the bonds at once, borrowing thirty million dollars at three and a quarter, three and a half percent, that's still, I mean, cheaper than almost, you can, you can borrow at a two hundred thousand dollar house payment, I mean, house mortgage.
Uh, President Briggs. Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not a debt person anyway, but, but I understand the principle behind this. So, you know, Board of Education, this, I mean, this sounds like something we should definitely, uh, move on. And if anything changes based on, um, the election time, when the bond language needs to be printed, I mean, we can make those adjustments, is what I've heard, uh, Mr. Boyd share with us.
Can, can I ask another question, please?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Boyd, I'm having a problem. They go in and out, so don't, don't, uh, don't disappear on me. So, saying, you're saying that we go on with the election as and that, that if something occurs, we just hold on to that. Did you, mine is going in and out. Were we able to pick up any of that?
Yeah, so I, I think what you were saying, Mr. Brooks, is that if you pass your bond issue in August, um, you can actually not issue the bonds and just wait till the market is back stable. So you basically, you're holding on to the bonds and you're not putting them into the municipal market. You just have authorization to issue the bonds. And if the market's not stable until December, you can go ahead and issue the bonds in December. If it's not stable until February of the next year, you can issue the bonds in February, but you still have the authorization for the voters. So you have a lot of flexibility in terms of just holding on to that issuance and that authorization until it's the right time to enter the market.
That, that's, uh, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, Mrs. Peyton, for the record, I would like that written for the record. Um, because of course, you know, there'll be a, a, a new board, a few new board members, so I would like to have that in our records.
Thank you very much, President Briggs.
Thank you.
I will make sure that's in there.
Uh, President Briggs, is this the time where we're gonna discuss how we're gonna promote this like the, uh?
No, I think, I, this is the time where we should go ahead and take action on this based on the discussion. And then we can discuss, um, promoting it. So I, I, I mean, we can have more discussion, but I believe Marissa and Dr. Skinner, they've provided some, um, framework for how we're gonna promote the bond moving forward.
I'd like to see that.
Discussion that needs to take place. Dr. Skinner, if you could just briefly provide a summary of what we plan to do within the next upcoming months promoting the bond.
The, the first thing we, we have to do is, you know, once we get this approved tonight, we still have those options that we had presented to the public, options one, two, and three. So we have to actually determine what we're going to utilize that bond for, whether it's gonna be option one, option two, option three, or a hybrid of the options. And so what, that's the first thing we have to do is really make that determination. And then of course get the bond language for the twenty-sixth. The vote is not until August the second. So once we get all that done, uh, we will start after May twenty-sixth, getting the language done. We will start visiting homeowners' associations and working through the community and putting yard signs up during the summer.
If I could, so May, could we also, uh, look at, uh, getting our, uh, our, uh, council people that are in this district, also meeting with the pastors of this community, getting it out to, to their churches if you guys can, and also reaching out to our alumni, uh, because a lot of alumni Hickman and Ruskin alumni, please, put that on there also.
And, and I do believe Dr. Skinner and Mrs. Graves may have had a comment in this section as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, you know, I was just saying, uh, you know, once we get the language down, uh, I think it's important for us to really get it out to the community. Means like the South, um, South Kansas City Alliance and, you know, just to let people know, uh, after we decide what we're gonna do with the bond money.
And I agree.
So if there's no further discussion, uh, the chair is seeking, yes, a director watching.
I got you. Uh, I'm, I would like to place a motion that we, uh, approve for the approval of the thirty million, uh, dollar twenty-twenty bond amount.
Uh, second.
Okay, uh, Madam President?
Yes, Director Brooks.
And you went out. Think you gotta hold that button down.
I'm holding it down. It's still acting silly. Um, Dr. Skinner, um, I, are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Are you, are we, uh, I assume we're gonna put out some glossy kind of print stuff to, to the voters in, in, in the, in the Hickmanville District?
Sure of your question.
His question was, did you put out any, uh, promotion?
No, what, will we?
Yeah, will we?
Will we?
We, we will. I mean, right now, we, we haven't been concentrating on the campaign. We've been trying to concentrate on the bond itself, looking at what we're going to utilize the monies for. That's why we've had the three public forums presenting the options at the last one on April second. And, and so again, that, that's the first, our next steps is really determining what it's going to be. And then once we determine that, get the bond language, then we'll start promoting.
So we need to have a meeting.
No, what I'm saying is that we need to take action right now so that we can continue.
If I can, let me still, let me still get a question. My, my, I think and I could just wait, but this, this is totally up in air, so I hope, what I'm saying is that maybe, maybe, wait, when we get we, uh, uh.
Director Brooks.
Yes, ma'am.
We're having a really hard time hearing you. So if you, if you, um, you can.
Put it in the chat, put it in the chat, put it in the chat.
Put your question in the chat, please.
How about that?
Call Carla from your house phone.
We can hear, we can hear.
Go ahead and say it. I hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, my God, you can hear me. Thank you there, Mr. Reagan. You can hear me okay.
Not Reagan. Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right, oh, my God, you're okay. You shouldn't have told me that. You'll be talking, but I mean, no, I think, Dr. Skinner, I'm misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm, I'm aware of, from, from now until, uh, uh, election time, I'm saying when we begin to send something out, and, and the board may want to, that administration can consider this, at least the board approval, whatever, to get the endorsement of, of, of the council persons, the four with the fifth and sixth district council person, as well as the, uh, two legislators that represent our district. It may be we'll have one in, but then we don't have a, a sixth district, uh, uh, thirty-six district legislator yet. And some of the neighborhood organizations as, as supportive, uh, uh, supportive of the initiative. And I'm throwing it out for, for your, your, your consideration.
Yes, sir. I, I, I hear you and, and would definitely, uh, do all of those, um, uh, actions that you're discussing.
And, and it might, and I don't know whether Reagan said this or not, because I couldn't hear it at the time. Before, uh, before, well, in order to have that endorsement, to set up a, and I don't, I don't, I'll be out here, whether we can meet or not, but even, uh, uh, in one of these, uh, Zoom.
Virtual meeting.
Zoom, I hate with a passion, but to get them in the Zoom and, and explain to them what we're doing and, 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 and go into their support. And at that time say, would you be willing to have your name listed as one of the endorses uh, of, of, uh, our, uh, uh?
Yes, right now, again, you know, we had that last, um, forum, which was April second, and we don't have any schedule, but we can definitely discuss scheduling something to, uh, address your concerns.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Now that I can talk, you might have to, you had to work hard to keep me from talking now. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the table, and we've had.
So we have a motion and a second on the table, and we've had discussion. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote to approve the request for bond approval for $30 million for the 2020 bond election. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watchery.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Carter. Chair votes, aye. Motion care, Director Graves.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Motion carries six to zero. At this time, we're moving on to the approval of the Board of Education.
Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
All right, take care, everyone, and thanks again. Uh, take care.
We're moving on to item 6.5, which is Board of Education meeting dates for May 2020 and April 2021. Um, if you can pull that up, Ms. Peyton. I would like to suggest that we approve this as printed, but once the reorganization of the board occurs, there may be some changes. I just would like to just make that comment.
We don't know when the election is going to be.
Uh, I don't know when the elections have been pushed off.
We still don't know, which may also, uh, create some problems here.
Let's just go ahead and table this. Uh, Director Brooks, Watchery, and Vice President Reagan, is it in the best interest of the board to table, I mean, not to table this, but to put this on the June agenda for discussion?
That is, that sounds good.
That's what I was saying.
President Briggs.
I don't know who that is.
That, this is, this is Dr. Skinner. I, I don't believe that if we table this until June, that we have a May meeting scheduled, do we?
No, we won't. I was waiting. Can we table this till May 21st, being the fact that we don't have a, we don't have a, uh, May without this?
Well, we, well, we have to have a May meeting because you have to approve the bills. So.
Hence the reason why I don't want to table this until June.
So let's go ahead. If, if it's, if it's at the pleasure of the board, can we approve the May 21st and May 11th board meetings and then, uh, discuss the rest at a later date?
So Madam President.
Madam President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on.
Excuse me, this is Donna Payton. The schedule is set up such that June 11th would be that board meeting where we would have the reorganization based on the first Tuesday in June election that is set, and we have to reorg within a, within 11 days. So, um, even if we don't have that as a reorganization meeting, the title would merely change to regular session meeting. There just would not be a reorganization meeting, but that date would be reserved on our calendar for the June board meeting. And then the April board meeting is set accordingly based on the first Tuesday election in April of 2021.
Okay, well.
President, President Briggs, I say that we just, because we got 11 days. So we could still have a June meeting, and then we could come back and have a reorganization within the 11 days from that, uh, from the, uh, election. We still got 11 days to do it.
No, what the chair, what the chair is seeking is a motion just simply to, um, to amend this, modify this recommendation to only accept May the 21st and June 11th date until further notice.
Madam President.
Yes.
A second.
I saw a motion.
A second.
I need, I, I need you to state the request, please.
The request, uh, the request that we approve the May 21st and June 11th, uh, scheduled meeting dates, uh, postponing the, postponing discussion for the remaining days of the year.
Thank you.
And that was my second. I knew exactly what he said.
Great.
If there's no further discussion, the chair, I would like to take a vote. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watchery.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Carter. Chair votes, aye. Motion carries to accept the modification to the Board of Education meeting dates for 2020. Moving on to item 6.1, Hope Hangout.
Okay, um, yes, for item 6.6, the Hope Hangout, this was, uh, in reference to the first read of the Student Handbook. Um, currently, our Student Handbook reads where, as a student is suspended OSS, they are not allowed on any school district property um whatsoever. Um, and as you know, the Hope Hangout was located across the street from Ruskin, not on school property, but within this past semester, it was moved to, um, Burke Academy. And so the concern has been, uh, been arisen by the, the Board of Hope Hangout that if we have students that are OSS, um, some of these students, um, would still need to be at Hope Hangout after school, um, to attend to get the benefits of Hope Hangout. In that regard, we brought this to the, uh, Finance Committee, or actually the EAC Committee, and there was some questions, and the EAC Committee collectively decided not to quote promote it. However, they did want to bring it to the full board for discussion. And I do have Marva Moses in the audience to address any concern and answer any questions.
All right, welcome, Mrs., uh, Marva. How are you doing? Thank you for being so patient.
Hello, everybody, and thanks for having me. I'm doing well, and I hope everybody else is doing well. So I'm here to answer any questions and I'm, you know, however I can plead my.
President Briggs, can I go first?
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
Uh, uh, good evening. Once again, Mrs. Moses, how you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm doing great, ma'am. Uh, as you know, our board policy states that any activities that are on uh, school property states that any student, uh, that is suspended or has some type of discipline, uh, is not able to, uh, be on school grounds at all, whether it's any type of program. Uh, and I'm going to use this as an example. This year, the Ruskin cheerleaders were, uh, suspended, and they could not cheer at all, at all. And so, looking at that, uh, I can't see us making an exception for one group, whether it's, and nothing against anyone, but we cannot make an exception, and this is just only Mr. Reagan, one of the seven, for any other group. And, and we cannot do that when maybe our star players or our cheerleaders need to go and cheer our, at our games. Uh, so that's my take. I cannot support it, uh, simply because that would be biased toward our student athletes. Not only our student athletes, maybe, uh, uh, anyone that's in our debate class, chess class, Spanish club, any of that. And we already have had this, this also might be a legal thing, because you have to look at it in that aspect also, simply because, Maria, that this person was suspended for fighting, and they're stuck on, uh, school grounds. Then they see that student involved in that fight that they might have had that fight with, and therefore we have another problem. So that's just my take, and I'm done.
Madam President.
Yes, Director Watchery.
Good evening, ma'am. Um, I just want to get your take on, I know that this is something that we, uh, we've obviously had this discussion, but, um, I was wanting to get your take on, uh, the aspect of exceptions being made for Hope Hangout, because I don't know what your particular position is on this as well.
Well, so let me, I'm gonna try, thank you for having me. I'm gonna try and do some background. Um, when we were, when the school district and the police department and the county and family court and all of us got together several years ago to dream Hope Hangout up, it was specific to the fact that we had a significant um, youth crime rate in Southland. And it was, you know, breaking and entering, shoplifting, stuff like that, where it, our kids were just kind of out there, nowhere to really be, couldn't go home, no house keys, stuff like that. So the Hope Hangout was developed specifically to meet the need of the kid who was absolutely on the fence or potentially toe, one toe over the fence in terms of trouble and, you know, bad decisions and risky behaviors. And so, the purpose of the hangout was to, to, to serve as um, safe space for all of our kids, in particular those ones who were vulnerable to, to making risky decisions. And so, um, for, when we first opened the hangout, I was asked, well, why is this going to go into Burke? And I thought, well, we should probably kind of keep it different. And then as Burke became the hub for all alternative educational experiences, it was a natural progression to put the hangout in Burke as the fact that the majority all of the kids at Burke are young people who have made decisions that have landed them outside of mainstream school and into an alternative, uh, educational experience. So, you know, while I understand what the, what you guys' rules are in terms of suspension, um, being in Burke is an interestingly different situation, because it's, it's, Hope Hangout is not a club. And it's not a, it's not a necessarily a fun program. It's, we've got some fun components to it, of course, but, uh, for example, historically, the district has sent, having gone through a hearing, has sent kids to the hangout. But you know, your restitution is you've got to go and spend the next semester at the hangout, getting all the different, uh, program resources that we offer. And so, I, I do, I understand the dilemma completely. Uh, and, and to answer the question about, this was Director Reagan, about young people, you know, potentially seeing each other and it becoming an issue, uh, I have had young people in our spaces we've opened, who had, you know, serious issues with one another. Uh, and, and because the rules of the hangout are so intense and our tenants of being hangout dwellers are so serious, I just don't have them kind of problems. We just don't have, you know, we, I make it very, very clear, this is the one spot you have, and you don't get to mistreat it or misuse its space. And so, I understand and I, and totally understand, but I just needed to give some, some real background. We saw a decrease in crime with the opening of Hope Hangout by 60% in one year. And it had more to do with the fact that I and those who worked with me had access to most of the, you know, the, those, those bad actors, you know, they, you know, I knew exactly who they were because they were coming through the hangout. And I could spend time discussing alternative ways to deal with, uh, friction and issues and, you know, genuine conversations across the table, one to the other about their issues. And so, I just needed to give that background. I don't, I wasn't aware if all of you were fully understood how this concept was dreamed up and what it meant to the, the safety of our kids and our community overall.
Well, Ms. Marva, I do want to thank you for all the work that you do do. And, um, I would like to have the, you, you know, it's it's great work, and I think it's important that, um, Dr., I mean, oh, I said Dr. Carla. Dr. Carla Fields Johnson, Ms. Field Johnson, if you could just spend a minute or two and kind of weigh in on really what this means to the district overall, not just for the Hope Hangout, but for the whole structure of the district, if you can take a minute or two.
Um, thank you, President Briggs. So, the, um, one of the, one of the certain issues that you have with making this exception is, um, just the nature of making exceptions in general to, um, your policy. There's always a concern that, um, you're creating a slippery slope by making exceptions to the rule, um, with regard to so, you know, by allowing one, students to be on campus for certain things, um, and not others during out of school suspension, um, presents a situation where you may have to consider that question again for other, um, entities and organizations. And so, you know, in terms of a, a best practice, it's certainly the best practice to try and, um, maintain consistency with your policies. Um, that being said, um, you can draft out a specific purpose and, and for why you're making the exception and make that clear as part of your policy. Um, you know, there's nothing that would prevent you legally from doing that. Um, I just, you know, would caution, uh, the possible slippery slope that can begin with doing, with making those exceptions. I mean, there's a reason why um, students aren't allowed on campus, um, while they're in out of school suspension. And generally, the board policy, um, and the student code of conduct, um, provides additional punishment for students that do, um, find themselves on campus, uh, when they're in out of school suspension. And so, um, all of those things have to be addressed. I certainly understand the benefit of Hope Hangout to the student. Um, but I think you have to weigh that benefit, uh, against, um, the, the possible problems that can arise with, um, with making changes to your, to your policy, um, in terms of having students on campus when they're suspended from school. Um, it, it can be done. It, it can certainly be drafted in a way that would allow you all to do it. Um, I just think that as directors, you all have to weigh that.
Uh, Madam President.
Yes, Director Brooks.
If I might, um, aren't the students at Burke there for the same reason that these kids who are hanging out? Uh, are we talking about really the same kids except different names? And my point is that, that, you know, I'm, 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 I I'm, I'm real concerned about us having such a strict policy that, 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 uh, this is like zero tolerance. I, I, I hate that, as, as, as Ms. Moses was saying about the reduction in, in, in when we send that, that suspended kid for whatever reason home, and nobody's there. It's not like now, because somebody ought to be there and, and the kid too. But when we send him home, then, then, you, I can recall, uh, when I was on the Board of Police Commissioners, always asked for stats for the total city, but more specifically for the Hickmanville's area, and found that the burglaries, car thefts, purse snatches, larcenies were taking place when the, with, uh, from those kids who were suspended from our dis, from our school. So I just throw that out. I, 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 I have to listen a little more before I decide if, if asking for approval or disapproval of modification. But that's my, my thinking, that I just, I hate to see, and I know what, what Brother Reagan is saying and, and what you've asked and what Carla said. But let's think about now, um, uh, how can we save this kid? And, and is, is, is setting up a strict policy, uh, more important than trying to save this kid?
Madam President. Madam President.
Yes.
I know everybody kind of cut in, uh, and I, and I wanted to respond to Ms., uh, Marla. Um, so this is, this is kind of what I know. I know that, uh, the short term, uh, short term out of school suspension is what, 10 days? Am I correct? I'm asking administration.
Yes, administration can only suspend up to 10 days without going to a hearing.
And if it does go to a hearing, that would be the kids that are long-term at Burke. Am I correct?
Uh, they're not long-term suspended when they go to Burke. They're.
Long-term suspension, but the, the kids that go to a hearing that aren't, they are not in OSS, they, when they're referred to a hearing, they were referred to report to Burke as far as education without any, without the aspect of suspension, correct?
That is an option, yes, sir.
Okay, so the, this is what I'm hearing. I mean, I'm hearing us talk about the actual aspect of a, an exception for OSS for Hope Hangout with the with the aspect that an out, out of school suspension would be, uh, at, at most ten days. What, the issue that I have with, with this is the fact that by making that exception, you would, you have other extracurricular activities in which kids aren't allowed to go to, and it would be those same kids that are under that OSS? And this, and then, and this doesn't necessarily, this policy does not mirror, um, uh, zero tolerance to me. It actually mirrors the aspect of holding to ensure that our students are held accountable. I don't want to enable the behavior of students who are receiving that ten, that ten-day or less out of school suspension in the aspect that that is the consequence for their actions for the, for the, um, the act in which they committed on school grounds. By, now, I can understand if we were to make an exception in the sense of they're still allowed to participate in the Hope Hangout, but not on campus, based on the fact that that would be the policy that's already in place. But, but uprooting this policy to make an exception for the, for OSS with the ten-day suspension would, would not be fair to the kids at Burke or the kid, or the kid that has also been suspended as far as learning the lesson of being suspended and not being allowed, because that is the consequence. The exception is that, is not the fact that they cannot participate in the Hope Hangout. The exception is, is that they would be on campus.
Can I just, I just, can I, can I add something? I do want to respond if I can. President, uh, President. I, I agree that e- exceptions can be kind of hinky. But you have to understand that Hope Hangout has, has been established as an intervention process, meaning family court sends kids to Help Hangout to do their community service. Uh, we've had students sent to the hangout from the school district specifically. And they're not out, they're not, a lot of them are not there at the three o'clock hour. They're there at the noon hour to get the intervention work between noon and three. And so, I, and I think that part of, what I heard, uh, Director Brooks say is, these kids are no different from the angels that are at Burke already.
Absolutely.
They just haven't progressed to Burke yet. And so, rather than them, uh, get all the way to Burke, meaning we had three-day suspension, and we had five-day, and we had a ten-day, and we had a hearing. And now we've progressed to Burke. Why not allow for the intervention work to happen so they don't escalate to that point?
If I so, if I so may-
Can I, can I, can I make a comment, please? You know, I think this conversation warrants, I, I would really like, if it's the board's pleasure, to send this to the Policy, Policy Committee and, and invite Mrs. Marla Mosley to come and present the, the opportunities, uh, because I think we can talk about this for another-
Oh, yeah.
And so, to give it, to honor the, just to honor the process, I think this is one of those things, especially if the students are not going to fall within the student handbook requirements. We, we need to, to vet this properly. I, I, I totally feel uncomfortable making a, taking action on this tonight. But the only action that I'm willing to take and hopefully the board will, will, uh, follow me in this is to move it to the Policy Committee to warrant it the discussion time it needs in a open session.
I agree.
Madam President?
Good afternoon, Madam President.
But, but-
Madam President?
And I don't think you need a motion. I think you just do that.
No, we got to have a motion.
We have to have a, I would like the motion that this topic is moved to the Policy Committee for discussion.
My second.
Let me make a quick comment. Yeah, hey, guys. This is Ms. Graves. I can't hardly get a word here because some of you keep coming in two and three.
You're gone.
So I just, so I can't even get in because as soon as I start talking, then, anyway. I just wanted to say, well, uh, Ms. Moses is, is on the line just the way I feel. I don't have any objections. Um, I'm just one person. Um, I haven't heard of anything that has happened derogatory, um, with that program. And so, I just wanted you to know that, you know, that this is a one board member. I, I, I don't, I know we, we do have, uh, policies in place and I know that we can make some exceptions, but I do think that this program has been a benefit, uh, to Hickman Mills. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. And if I have any other information, I'll just come to the policy meeting and share that. But I just wanted, since she was out there, I wanted to let her know, uh, this is Ms. Graves.
President Briggs, this is Vice President-
That's it.
This is Vice President Ray. Are we discussing now?
No.
No, we're not. She just wanted to make a, a comment, but we have a motion.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know.
President Briggs?
Yes.
President Briggs, before you entertain your motion, Ms. Graves, can you take your, can you turn your camera on? I think that's part of the problem. And if we were voting, um, by individual vote, your camera should be on.
Uh, well, I guess since we did the second motion and everything, uh, for the po-, uh, Policy Committee, is that correct? Or is that official? Do we need to do it over?
We have a motion, no, we have a motion to move it to the Policy Committee. And so, we're looking at the second, I think Brooks did the second. Then Graves had a com-, or you, well, Graves had a comment.
Yeah, that's all.
Uh, and also, also with that, also with that, uh, President Briggs, since this is discussion now since after the motion, uh, Mrs. Moses, we are glad that you are helping our students. I just want you to know that. That's the first thing. But, uh, like I stated, I am one of the seven. But to make an exception, because I've been to the games where the principals have told students, because you are, uh, suspended, you cannot come on our grounds. And as a board and as the government of this Hickman Mills School District, we are supposed to look at the best for all students, not just some, but all. So I'm hoping-
I, I understand, Vice President Reagan. Okay.
We come in, Ms. Graves, we come.
Okay, I understand, Vice President Reagan. Thank you for sharing your comments. It's been, we're going to take a vote to see if it moves to the Policy Committee. Vice President Reagan.
Hi.
Director Graves.
Hi.
Director Abram.
Hi.
Director Watchery.
Hi.
Director Brooks.
Hi, hi.
Director Carter. Chair of all, I, motion carries to move it, move this conversation to Poli-, Policy Committee for further discussion. Moving on to item six point seven. Thank you, Mrs. Marla, for coming.
Thank you for having me. You guys have a good night.
You too.
He's safe.
Item six point seven, the first read of the student handbook, okay?
Right, um, you know, we, you had a copy of the student handbook now for about six weeks, um, to look at it and ask any questions. So there's been no changes to the student handbook with the exception of the second attachment, which was an acknowledgement page that, uh, has been added recently that basically states that students and parents have read the handbook and will understand the handbook and will abide by those policies. So this was something that we decided that was needed after it was submitted to you all for reading. Uh, that's been the only addition. So I don't know if you had any questions about the acknowledgement or the, um, first draft of the handbook itself.
I did, uh, President Briggs, this is Vice President Reagan, uh, is it okay?
Yes, but I do want to point out that this has been sitting, uh, this has been sent multiple times to board members. So I hope that we're going to keep our comments, uh, at a minimum of two minutes.
Yeah, this is real short because I had a chance to sit in on the, uh, policy when they was doing it. And I still, like I stated to you guys, uh, uh, Dr. Skinner, I do see that there are still a lot of loopholes in this handbook. And I see, and I still look at the one to tens and all that. It's still not really getting to the point, and I stated that to you guys. And I don't see that still, I still see it in here. It's not like really actually spelt out, like one to ten days at the preference of this and at the preference of that. Uh, I'm not in agreement with that, and I stated that already, President Briggs. That's the reason why I'm kind of still looking at this, like, why is it still sitting in here as the same? Because this, this policy is, this student handbook is very easy to get around. And I'm just going to be frank, uh, I'm looking at it, I can, I can, uh, beat this system. And I'm not trying to be, uh, I'm not trying to be, you know, uh, if, if I'm really paying attention to our student handbook, it can be beaten. And we need to really look at it. That's why I'm asking.
I, I, I think you've looked at it, and so I think this is for the first read. And so there, it will come back to the board next month, correct, Dr. Skinner?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so if you ha-, if any board member, I mean, I know I've seen this in my email ten times. So if any board member between now and the next meeting have any revision recommendations, they should present those during this time. If not, we can move on to the next section. Uh, uh, President Briggs? Yes. Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I, this is my, uh, I'd like to say this. If you look at it and you have questions and concerns, uh, personally, what you think should be there. Because when you come back and you say, well, I don't like, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't like this, you know, this doesn't look right, then you need to put in what you think is right. Because just coming, saying that this doesn't look right to you or something's missing, well, what's missing? Put it in so that we can talk about it, you know, rather than, because it's so vague when you say that. So I'm just saying.
Let me be clear.
That's anybody, that's, that's, that's me as well. Be specific. If it doesn't, if it's something that should be in there that you feel, then write it in there under, under whatever category, rather than just say, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't seem right. That's all I'm saying. That's it.
Yeah, yes, President Briggs, let me be clear, and I'm going to be real quick. I have been giving this to the, uh, uh, Education Committee before, uh, this is a two-year process. Uh, this is, and I've also gave, uh, some other things from other surrounding districts. So I know how other student handbooks look. I've also given this to Dr. Skinner and them a long time ago. I don't know when might that have happened. So I have expressed my concerns with our student handbook because I was the one who stated about it before that it was very vague.
Mr. Reagan, um, with all due respect, you've had this for six weeks. I've asked for comments. This is the first comment that you submitted to me at all. So I had no idea you had, I had no idea you still had any concerns.
Yes, sir. Well, let me go back to, like I said, that I've been talking about this for two years. Uh, you were in the meeting. So I did, uh, I have given you some-
And I understand that, sir, but this is a draft of a brand-new handbook that which I believed we addressed all your concerns. And since I have not heard anything since, then, I, again, I just assumed that you were fine with the revisions that we have made.
Okay, I'll make sure I get them to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much. So if we're going to go ahead and move on, if there's further discussion about this section. Moving on to the last item, uh, Mrs. Phil's Johnson. And I, for some reason, I don't see any dinner ready in my house.
Sorry?
And I was wondering that too, Madam President. Ms. Peyton, I love her.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, Ms. Peyton.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
There's no grub, there's no grub on my front or back porch.
No one set a plate today. So we're on our last item, and if Mrs. Carla Fields Johnson can kind of sum it up, because I know that the Policy Committee spent at least three hours on pol-, on, on this section. So if you can just take us to the next section, Ms. Phil's Johnson, that would be great.
I would be glad to. Thank you, President Briggs. Uh, so, Board of Education, you all have, uh, before you, the draft revisions, uh, made by MSBA for the 2019 C Policy Update Overview. Just by way of background, um, those were provided to me and I shared them with Dr. Cargill. Um, Dr. Cargill and I met and reviewed, uh, each one of those policies, and then those policies were forwarded to the Policy Committee. Um, and the Policy Committee met on April the seventh and went through in detail, um, each one of those revisions. And so, Directors, I'm not going to go through all of those now, but I do encourage you to watch, um, the April seventh, uh, Policy Committee Meeting, um, to see the discussion and hear the discussion on, on those policies if you want to. There is a document, um, that's uploaded with this agenda. The very top document, it's called MSBA 2019 C Policy Update Overview. Um, that document also summarizes the changes in the policies, um, by groups. I'll tell you that most of these, this series of policy revisions are made because of changes in the law. Um, and so, a few of those policies were submitted to the Finance Committee also, who reviewed them. So there's been a really extensive review of this round of policies by, um, the Board of Education. And so, what I have done, those are all uploaded, um, as part of this agenda. If you all could review those, if there are any questions that you have for me, um, you know, please reach out to me. Um, again, I encourage you to look at the April seventh Policy Committee Meeting, um, for a detailed discussion of the policy. Then they'll come before this board for a second read next month, and I'll be glad to entertain questions at that time. Um, and also entertain questions between now and then if you submit any of them to me. And obviously, if you have any questions right now, I'm glad to entertain them.
If we have a question, can we submit them to you via email between now and then? Or should we wait till the next meeting?
Nope, you can absolutely send them to me, uh, via email between now and then, and that'll give me the opportunity to do whatever research is necessary to provide you with the answer.
Thank you.
And that was all I had, President Briggs.
All right, thank you so much. And can you please remind us for the record, the date, the Policy Committee we met? I, I don't have it in front of me. So many meetings.
The Policy Committee met on, um, Tuesday, April the seventh. Um, and if Ms. Peyton could let us know whether or not that meeting is up on, online at this point?
All right. That meeting has been posted on the district website with the board. Um, and as a matter of fact, the Finance Committee meeting and the Educational Accountability meeting, um, from this past Tuesday and Wednesday are posted as well. Thank you very much. IT team, go.
What about Facilities?
The Facilities Committee meeting is posted.
All right, so if there's further discussion, we're moving on to the next item. Can we pull up the agenda, please?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I understand that we're moving into infor-, informational items, uh, seven point O. Um, if, if I may, uh, before we do that, I noticed that we did not have any applause, applause this month. Um, well, I just, uh, want to acknowledge, uh, some of the, uh, the awards and accolades that went out this week. For instance, it was, uh, last week was, um, Assistant Principal Week. So I want to thank, uh, Don Miller, Rena Gordon, Robbie Madden, John Miller, Julian Chaffin, uh, Daniel Williams, Latoya Reagan, uh, Ryan Beating, uh, Christopher Barker, uh, Kerry Montre, and Gary Curtis. Um, uh, I'd like to say happy, uh, Assistant Principals Week. Um, also, we also had, uh, the, uh, the district also announced that there were, um, uh, the Building Teachers of the Year Award, which, uh, Wesley Cook from Dobbs, uh, Christine Gervasio White, uh, from Truman, Melody Gibson from, uh, Millennium, uh, Samuel Hill from Compass, uh, Tracy Little Jackson from, um, Smith Hale, Rachel Mayo, uh, for, uh, from Ruskin, Mia Robinson from Urban, Erica Slotman from Warford, uh, Maxine Sumner from Freedom Markley, uh, and Katrina Towles, uh, from Ingalls, uh, and Dana Trumbly, uh, Ms. T. from, uh, Burke. And I understand that our, uh, three Teacher of the Year Finals were, uh, this, uh, Ms. Mayo, Ms. Towles, Towles, and this, uh, J-, Jervasio White. I hope I'm not butchering your name, um. And lastly, I want to, more, last but not least, I want to thank, uh, the nominees for the Person of the Year, which happened to be, uh, I think Gloria Foley from Ingalls, uh, Kimberly, um, Kimberly Ryan from Freedom, and, uh, our wonderful, 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 uh, Secretary of, uh, our Board, uh, Ms. Donna Peyton. Uh, I want to make, I wanted to make sure that in this, in these times that we're able to acknowledge our staff for the work that they do and especially in the awards that they deserve. Um, thank you all.
Well, you know what, Director Watchery? I'm so glad you didn't mention my name in there for this countless-
President Briggs, stop.
But you know, but you know what? I, I'm going to, I'm going to wait on my wings on that one, but that, that's my joke for the evening. That was my, my joke. But thank you so much for highlighting that again and, and this time. And I just want to also remind the Board of Education, before we discuss next month's meeting dates, that I will just continue to ask us to be patient and flexible during this time. Not only flexible, but understanding with our staff, our faculty, our families, our friends, our administration, our Board of Education team, and then our community stakeholders. I just, I just hope that we can be flexible, understanding, and, and kind of exercise a little bit more passion and tolerance. And of course, I want to thank everyone for their countless hours as a board president and the number of meetings that we meet for your service. And I promise you that one day, you will get an award for your service. That's my joke, that's joke number two.
Promising.
But
Monetary.
I do have some jokes because I, I don't normally eat this late, and I'm, I got some good $1.19 noodles that I'm blowing right now.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we're going to have to get them over each next time.
But thank you, guys. And then the future meeting dates, I don't have them. Ms. Peyton, do you have the future meeting dates up there?
I do.
I do, you ready?
Yes, they should be showing on the screen, I do apologize. I can go ahead and read them if you'd like. Please, Ms. Peyton.
Thank you.
The Policy Committee meeting is May 5th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. The Facilities Committee meeting, May 7th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. Educational Accountability Committee meeting, May 11th, 2020 at 5 o'clock PM. Finance Committee meeting, May 20, excuse me, May 12th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. The Regular Session Board meeting is scheduled for May 21st, 2020 at 6:30 PM. That is the end of the meeting.
And thank you so much. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.
Hold on, hold on, President Briggs, before we adjourn, I want to thank everybody that tuned into the virtual meeting. We have had more people in a virtual meeting than we have ever had in a board meeting this long period of time. So I want to thank all of them that have tuned in to this virtual meeting. This is marvelous, I hope that we can carry this out as we get to the, be able to see one another. But I want to thank everybody that's in this virtual meeting too, President Briggs, I'm sorry.
Thank you, if there's no further comments, this meeting is adjourned at 9:07.